We are now going to be moving into closed session, closed session pursuant to Minnesota statutes 13D point oh three subdivision one B for discussion and strategy of labor agreements between the County of Stearns and all bargaining units for January 1, 2022.
You
To order. I know we're trying hard to make sure people can socially distance. It's probably going to be a little bit hard. We certainly encourage people to wear masks if you're sitting on top of each other. Okay, Public Access Forum. Mike, had anybody responded remotely? Okay, this is the point in time where anyone wishing to address the Board on issues not found on today's agenda may do so at this time. Certainly for any of you who are here in person, it's very wonderful getting to see some people here. For the future, for those who want to join virtually can contact us either by calling 320-656-3602 or email info@county.co.stearns.mn.us by noon on Monday, the preceding meeting. Individual comments are limited to three or four minutes. County Board members, we don't engage in dialogue with speakers, but refer the matter to the appropriate county department. A citizen may speak at the Public Access Forum once per month. Is there anyone wishing to speak during this part? We will obviously have, when we get to the Truth in Taxation or Truth in Budgeting meeting, we'll have an opportunity then. Is there anyone wishing to speak in the public access at this point? Is there anyone wishing to speak? Okay, seeing none, we will move to the Consent Agenda. Members, are there any items that you wish to have pulled for further conversation? I believe there is at least something.
I'd wish to have number 11 pulled.
Okay. All right, members, note number 11. That's the authorized Board chair to sign letter to Morrison County landfill. There's some action on that, I believe. Anybody else? Seeing none, looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda with the...
So moved, Madam Chair.
Okay, with the exception of number 11.
I'll second that.
Great, thank you both. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, say nay. Okay, the motion carries, number 11. Commissioner Mergan.
This one, Joe and I were at a meeting for about two hours this morning with Morrison County Environmental Services. And with everything we came up with, there's a lot of discrepancies, how you would call it, Joe. And we would like to have a table so it can have some...
Yes, my understanding was it was going to be withdrawn. Ms. Benson?
You can either withdraw our table. Either is fine. It's not something that we public notice, so either is an appropriate action. What we'd like to do is take that letter back. We did get comment from Morrison County already to from related to the solid waste plan. And so we will look to be making some changes to the goal volume table based on those conversations. Then we will bring back a letter for you, hopefully in the near, very near future. So we would think by December 14th, we should have modified letter.
What's your preference? Would you rather have it withdrawn or do you want to table it?
I think we had talked about tabling it.
Okay, so table it till the 14th?
Correct.
Okay. That a formal motion in a second?
I would move to table it.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Okay, there's a motion and a second to table item 11. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, the motion passes. Thank you, thank you for making that time earlier today, too. All right, Administration, the five-year capital improvement plan.
We'll be turning to Mr. Hamis for this.
All right, thank you.
Working hard today.
Working very hard, you're earning your pay.
Good evening, Commissioners. Steve Hamis, Assistant Administrator, and we're here today to talk about the capital improvement plan. And I got two pieces of this. One is a presentation on the projects that are on our schedule. But also first, I'm going to turn this over to our administrative intern, Dave Konchak, from St. Cloud State, who has been working on part of our transparency and education initiatives. I'm assuming I'm talking into the mic, good. So part of our strategic plan talks about being better at informing the public about the decisions we make and some of the initiatives that we undertake. And we thought that we would start this process by creating some webpages for our capital projects. So Dave has done a good job of building some pages for a few of the projects that were recently completed, showing how well they did, what the intent was and purpose. And this is a look and a feel that we're going to use on all of our projects as we go forward, again, to help with that education process. So I'm going to turn it over to Dave.
Welcome.
Thanks, Steve, much appreciated.
You've probably heard me say this before, make sure you almost eat the microphone.
Get right on it, right, got it. All right, well, good evening, Madam Chair and Commissioners. As Steve mentioned, I'm Dave Konchak with the St. Cloud State University Masters of Public Administration Program. And just like to thank you upfront for sponsoring that. I am here the whole academic year, so started in September and I'll be here through next May, when I hope to graduate. And as Steve mentioned, one of the projects that he's had me working on is some public transparency involved with the capital improvement plan. You may be familiar with the OpenGov platform. Stearns County has been on for a little over a year, a year and a half, and is currently being used to present the budget information. It's a pretty powerful database tool and has a lot of capability to it. Stearns County is one of about 10 counties in the state of Minnesota that use OpenGov and primarily for financial presentation, although I did note that Dakota County used it for some presentation of data related to cares and the coronavirus. So it isn't limited to financial. One of the areas that we're exploring is putting up the capital improvement plan and projects. And you would access this through the Stearns County website and would be seamless to the public to, we would have a button there that you would access to get into this. Currently shown on the capital improvement plan, this would be the main page, if you will, and it shows, I'll just scroll down. It's a good combination, if you will, of not only financial data, very powerful financial tool that is interactive, but also able to use pictures, videos, different representations of financial information. So for those that are data wonks that really like to get into the data, they have that opportunity. But also it just presents well for folks that just want a quick glance and a good executive overview, if you will, of what's going on. So you can see this main page shows the overall capital improvement plan. And the current, this is for the 21 to 2021 to 2025, the five-year plan that we're currently enacting. I think we're all familiar, the new LEC takes up a big chunk of this, so it kind of dwarfs some of the other expenditures. And each one of the projects is listed, it has a front page here or a front segment. And they are listed by the different projects, everything from boiler replacement in the admin center to the Justice Center study and the eventual Justice Center project, most likely. But also stuff, including completed projects such as the service center addition. And then in addition to facilities, it also has the parks and trails improvement plan as well. So you can see we have the Dairyland Trail Extension, for instance, and completed the work ongoing with the Beaver Island Trail Extension. The engineering portion, which is the design of it, phase one, if you will, and then the actual project itself. So you can see all these different projects represented on the main page. It is, as I say, interactive, and one of the things is you can click on, click here on each one of these projects and fly to, fly through to a separate project page for each one of those projects. So that's what I'm going to just demonstrate for you on a couple of the projects. One that's already completed, the very popular and always exciting Administration Center boilers replacement. Who doesn't love a good boiler project, right? This was done earlier this year, so this is a good example of what a typical project would look like, I would say, and a fairly simple project, not something as complicated as, say, a full Justice Center. Yeah, the header, talk about what it is we did, why we did it. I don't think that the 1980s was that long ago, but my kids tell me it wasn't a previous century. Boilers that were in, they originally installed in the administration building in the 1980s are in fact out of date. Back then, they got 80, and I happened to be a mechanical engineer by training, so I, I came out of engineering school in the 80s, and 80% efficiency was a big deal back then because you were replacing boilers from the 1930s and 40s that were 40%. So we thought it was a big deal, but that's nothing nowadays, so to speak, because now we've replaced the boilers. And I don't have the pictures of the original boilers, but these are the new boilers that are in there, and they're very, I mean, these are exciting, they're like a new vehicle practically in their design. But the big win for Stearns County is that we're now up to 96% thermal efficiency as opposed to 80%. So a huge jump in efficiency and getting very close to almost perfect, 100%. So the good news on this is, yes, we had to spend money on it, but the savings per year is going to average about $5,800 per year, so fairly good payback time with these. year is going to average about $5,800 per year, so fairly good payback time with these. This shows what the funding source was. Of course, this one's fairly benign because it was all bond funded at $250,000. Of that $250,000 budgeted, the actual amount that Kevin was able to bring it in at was $155,396. So good news story there in terms of bringing in projects on time and under budget. Just as an example, this shows where it's located and talks also about down at the bottom, why we did it, what was the justification for doing it, and also how it ties into the county goals. So we reference the 2030 Stearns County Comprehensive Plan, and we reference what chapter, in this case, Chapter 8 for county facilities, and which goal it's, the project is meeting. So I think you can see it's a pretty comprehensive page of information. Another one we've got from the facilities was, of course, the service center addition, much larger. This is a little bit different format, we're still experimenting with that, showing the location first, and you can have different headings on it. But again, you can see, and there's a lot of interaction possible, again, this is all bond funded. But the ability to put in pictures and even put in video, make it very interactive, make it very user friendly. These, of course, are the groundbreaking, groundbreaking pictures, and these are the after pictures, the completion pictures, so. On the park side, just the last one to show you is the Lake Coronas Shower Building. And this one just got started, and this is the, well, former now, shower building out at, out at Lake Coronas. He says, as of recently, this was activity, unfortunately. I wish I could have been there for that, it's always fun to watch demolition, and from a construction background. So you had the existing structure, the demolition of that, and now they've got the foundation going in for the all-concrete block building that'll be going up and replacing the wood structure, which was aging and requiring quite a bit of maintenance with a largely maintenance-free block building with new, all-new fixtures. Again, it talks about purpose justification where it's at. This one, you did have a little more fidelity, it was bond funded 50%, but the other funding did come from the Minnesota DNR Outdoor Recreation Grant Program and also some shared funds with Meeker County because of the joint nature, it's a regional park. So the total amount budgeted is actually over $320,000, but we're using the $320,000 figure. And you can see it's, we're real-time tracking, finance is able to, this is all tied into actual financial records, so people can track on a weekly basis how much is being spent to date, only $5,324 has been built out against that, and so. But that in a nutshell is, what we're looking to do is essentially have every one of the projects up on here, and each will have its own project page. As we said, that'll be dynamic, that'll be interactive, and as the projects go through planning into construction and completion, people can reach into this and get really a wealth of information. I even kidded that Ben, some of the other products I've seen is, there's a parks, head of parks that had, did very good videos, not on each and every one of the projects to kind of sell different aspects of the park. So we'll get him, make him a, make him a video web star at some point here, if he's willing. Any questions that the Commissioners have at this point?
Any questions, Members? Thank you, it actually looks, as you're going through even the shower building, since we got a chance to go out to Lake Coronas, it is going to be a great way for people who might not be right there to see it and maybe consider going as well, so it looks, looks great. Thank you for all that work.
Absolutely, you're welcome.
See, Terrell?
Yes.
So is that going to, will that act as a storm shelter, too?
Hmm, that's a question for Ben.
Shake his head.
There's a separate building that serves as a storm shelter.
Okay, I just heard Dave say it was going to be a block construction, that's why I wasn't sure.
Right.
So again, as, right now, this is not live. We're hoping to have all the projects in the current plan built and have that then go live by the end of the year. Again, as part of our efforts to again, put out more information for the public on what kinds of activities we're undertaking, why they're happening, and what they cost, and how well we're able to do. And for most of our history, we've been able to bring in most of our capital projects under budget and on time, so want to be able to continue to do that and show the public the work that's going on. Now, now that I see Janet's flipped over to the right presentation, I'll go through the update on the capital improvement plan quickly for you. Again, the last time we were here to talk about this is October of 2020. There really hasn't been a lot of change in the project lists since last year, and so there's not a ton to talk about. But again, it's important to be able to tell the public what projects are on the radar, what ones are under consideration over the next five years. So again, very quickly, what is a capital improvement plan for members of the public? It's a way for us to identify long-term capital needs, allow us to develop and rehabilitate our own facilities, look for places to expand facilities, be able to identify the investment that we need to make to maintain our buildings, no different than when people take out, you know, construction loans on their house or remodel or add on a room, it's the same thing here. And of course, be able to coordinate the timing and the financing of these capital projects. The bond market likes to know that we have a good plan in place, a fiscal strategy in place for how we're intending to pay for these projects, and this is part of that process. We use our, our capital plan to ensure that we're using our space as efficiently as possible, to make sure that our staff's buildings are all maintained, that, again, we try to keep our buildings maintained as best we can. Again, as Dave pointed out, to be energy efficient as well as efficient for space usage and as well as for fiscal needs. It's also an ability for us to plan with other entities to try to access grant dollars. So as you heard about the shower building in Coronas Park, again, being able to have this on our plan helps to tell grant funders that we have an ability to do this and gets us more access to money to help fund some of these projects off of the county levy. And it does tie into our long-term planning goals of our comp plan and our other strategic goals that we do on a yearly basis. So for this next five-year period, again, we're looking at trying to bond when interest rates are favorable, and we always try to time when we go out to the market for bonds to help make sure we're paying as little as, as we need to. And of course, we try to ensure that we are not increasing the number of bonds that we're having to pay for at any given point in time. So we've been very lucky to have a good financial office to make sure that we're able to stagger when we do new bonds as old bonds fall off. And again, that's the situation we find ourselves in currently. So 2022 will be the final bond payment for another bond, and I think we only have one other bond currently going on at that point. So again, two bonds currently in existence, one will fall off next year, and so we'll have room to figure out how to pay for things in the, in the future. The major projects in this five-year cycle are, again, the replacement or upgrading of our law enforcement spaces and court spaces, looking at physical security of county facilities. That's something that I've been talking to you about for the last several years in terms of remodeling to make sure spaces are as secure as possible and to do exterior security improvements along the lines of the camera installments we did in the last couple of years. I was, on the Parks and Trail side, Ben would not be happy with me if I didn't, you know, talk about the fact that we do have in our capital plan to continue our trail development on the Beaver Island Trail and to look at some park development throughout the county. So I'd like to break down the projects by different types to help people understand where we're looking. As you can see, over the next five years, the bulk of this spending will be on infrastructure, and that's because of the court and law enforcement space. We have no projects in the maintenance of, you know, category in the next five years. We do have $3.6 million in parks, under a half, under $1 million on security improvements, and about $2 million in trails, so a total of $214 million is what we're currently looking at. The first area, infrastructure, is, again, the bulk of it. So again, these projects aren't new, I just want to reiterate that. So again, the county admin center, administration center remodel has been on the books for several years. You see, these are 2019 projects when they were first approved by the board. Again, the administration remodel is kind of tied to the decision-making process on the law enforcement and courts. As you see, I've got that in there at $200 million at this point. The, one in the middle, the HHW expansion is to expand the household hazardous waste building and to upgrade the geothermal field out there. That one does not require any bond funding, we'll be able to do that project completely within the solid waste funds. We have enough fund balance in that fund to take care of that. Of course, that fund is segregated and can only be used on, on things pertaining to solid waste, but we'll be able to take care of that one without levying for it. Moving on to parks, as you see, we have two projects attached to Wildwood Park, development phases one and two. Again, these are both approved in 2019, and as you see, we do have $1 million coming in from grant sources to help offset the costs of, of some of this. And then we have $650,000 in other park acquisition projects for development and, and expansion. Moving next to security, we only have one project here, and that again is a 2019 project on the ring road removal. This one may get subsumed into the law enforcement center project, again, depending on what decisions the board makes. At this time, I've left it out as a separate project, not knowing what decisions may be made when that study is completed. Again, we're looking at those, those studies to be completed sometime, I would think second quarter of next year. Back to trails, then we have one project, again, it's a 2019 project on the construction of the Beaver Island Trail Extension. It's a $2 million project in total, but most of the money is coming to us, again, from outside sources, so we only need to spend $160,000 of our own money as a match. That was really fast, I'm trying to get you caught up on time if I can, I don't know if I succeeded. So this slide looks at, again, what we think for only the county bonding, not for any of the grant dollars or anything else, how much the county bonding expenses would be over the next five years. So again, next year, we're looking at just over $1 million, $11 million in 2023, and then in 2024, when I would expect a justice center or law enforcement project would take off, you're looking at a higher cost going into '24 and '25 and '26, again, for the $207 million that we would have to bond to get all these projects completed. This just shows that information differently, looking at the debt service levy and how we have structured the payments based on our current debt service plan. As you see, '22, '23, and '24 are fairly flat. Again, we're taking advantage of the fact that the bonds, we have these two bonds, one of them falls off, and we're able to replace that, so it doesn't really impact the levy on a major level. And unfortunately, when you get to 2025, again, looking at the project, that, that's an impact that I don't know how we feather that out any differently than how it's currently situated, going up to about $10 million in, in debt service payments. Our time going forward is, again, this is just a reiteration of the project list. You've approved all of these projects already, but would appreciate it if you, again, approved the list of projects as we have to continue us to allow working on these projects. Again, they're all projects you've already established, and they're most, pretty much active, looking at bringing a formal capital plan and public hearing in the first quarter of next year, and then based on where finance administration are contemplating needing to actually do a public hearing and bonding, not needing to do that until 2023. That concludes my presentation. If there's any questions, happy to answer them, and we have Sarah.
Questions?
Here.
Questions, comments, motion? Mr. Hammons and Dr. Williams are looking for us to go ahead, recognizing these are projects, as you just said, we've already approved for staff to be continuing to work on. They're looking for us to be voting to approve the list and authorize staff to be working on the financial plan supporting these projects.
So moved.
Thank you, Commissioner Natch.
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Persky. Any discussion? All right, seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, the motion passes. Thank you, thank you for continued work. For those who are sitting here or might be listening, there is a rather large item on there, and we appreciate your work to try to figure out some creative ways to get to those numbers. That would be the short version, I think. Okay, anything else under administration right now? Because if not, we're going to switch over to public works, Ms. Peck.
Good evening, I'm going to start by distributing a summary of bids for my first item. So for my first item, I'm asking the county board to approve awarding the contract for SAP 073-613-025. That is the County Road 13 Bridge Replacement and Road Approach Work in Melrose. This project has been in the planning for about 10 years. The bid summary I just handed out, you'll see that the low bid was landwear construction, and they were just under seven and a half percent overestimate. So a breakdown of that just under $6 million. The overall county cost is about $3.8 million, and the overall city cost is about $2.1 million. The city has some work, a lot of work actually, included in this some dam repair, and they're actually moving the river channel. Bridge bonding will cover about $1.57 million worth of the county's costs. So again, understanding that this is over, and we got two bids, in talking with the contractors, there are some supply chain issues, cost and timeliness of that, so that did add to the cost. What isn't covered by bridge bonding will be covered by our state aid construction funding, so I'm asking the board to award the contract to landwear construction.
I'll move approval.
Thank you, Commissioner Natch.
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Mergan. Seeing no questions or discussion, do you have?
This one, Jody, what was, you know, the, the added cost for seven and a half percent? What was the major one that, that was there?
The bridge cost was significantly higher than what the engineers estimate.
Was it concrete, was it labor, was it engineering?
Well, probably all of the above. This does not include any engineering costs, so it, the steel was a significant cost increase, and then there are a lot of permitting issues that get built into those unit prices as well.
So both supply chain then and those permitting costs. Okay, thank you, Commissioner Persky. Any other questions or discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, approving the bid to landwear construction, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion approved.
For my next item, I'm asking the board to approve a contract with SRF Consulting Group for an alignment study on County Road 133, and then also to authorize staff to execute this contract. We received a federal planning grant through the St. Cloud APO to cover 80% of the cost of an alignment study. As you're aware, or probably aware, we started to reroute County Road 133 within the city of Sartell over 10 years ago, and that road currently dead ends at Tyson Road, and it does not make that connection with 19th Avenue. And there are a lot of property owners in between those two areas that are wondering if they should be, you know, selling their house, what they should be doing, and they would like to know if that alignment is ever going to go through. And part of determining if that should go through, or if it should, where that would go, we need to do that study and look at the environmental, social, and economic impacts of doing that. So for $80,000, $84,000, SRF Consulting Group is proposing to perform that study over the next year and give us some of those answers so we know where we're moving from here. And again, 80% of that cost is covered by federal planning dollars.
I'll move to approve the study.
Thank you, Commissioner Mergan.
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Persky. Any discussion or questions? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion passes.
I don't have anything miscellaneous right now unless the board has anything for me.
Commissioner.
I would say in this high inflationary period that we're beginning to experience engineer estimates are going to be more challenging. So it isn't significant that engineer estimates are what they are, as much as it is a sign of the times, and it'll get to be a bigger adventure over the next couple of years.
Absolutely, yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, Environmental Services.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Commissioners, Angie Berg with Environmental Services. Two items on the agenda relate to our most recent Planning Commission meeting on November 18th. The first is The first is item number 8567, starting on packet page 228. The Planning Commission did hold this public hearing on the 18th, and on a tie vote, basically deferring the decision to the commissioners. The Planning Commission ordinance indicates upon a tie vote that the commissioners decide. So as outlined in your packet, your options would be to approve the request, deny the request, or most commonly, you would choose to hold your own public hearing. And that could be done on either January 4th, which I know is your first meeting of the year, or it could be the following meeting, which is January 18th.
So members, I believe there was interest in making sure because of the, the vote that we would hold a public hearing. Is that correct?
That made sense.
Yeah. And Commissioner Lenzmeyer, did you have something you wanted to say about this?
Yeah. Well, if we're having the public hearing, this, there's no need to answer it now. But since it was a tie vote, at some point, a summary of the arguments on both sides would be appreciated. But we usually get that.
So we can get that, that closer in. Commissioner Persky, did you have something?
Yeah, I, I can comment about the meeting itself.
And we can, if you've got specific things you want to make sure we know for that public hearing, because it looks like we're gonna go to public hearing, maybe we just.
That'd be fine with me.
Okay.
Yes, we, we had a, a good number of people with live testimony. On the first one, there was eight. On the second one, there were, I believe, five. And then also, we had numerous correspondents that were read as well. And so this is quite a contentious issue with the community out there, both specifically to the properties that are there, but also in general, as far as how we're operating, so.
And we'll be hearing about that.
Right.
Yes, we will.
And I, I don't know if, who wants to be moving that. I would ask that it was not at our January 4th meeting, if that was possible. What was the other day?
Madam Chair, it would be January 18th.
January 18th. Is there a motion?
I'll move we set the public hearing for January 18th.
Okay, thank you.
Good second.
Great, thank you. We have a motion and a second to set item number one on for a public hearing on January 18th. Seeing no further discussion at this time, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Okay, well, we'll move to public hearing on that. Thank you, number two.
Yes, Madam Chair, and I failed to, to state that that item was the Matthew and Christina Barrick Vacation Home Rental. So moving on to the next one, it is item number two under Environmental Services, and this is a vacation home rental submitted by Gary and Lisa Glaw. This is on Elkview Circle. And this was a, basically the same decision as the, as the previous. And so unless you have any specific questions, and you wanted to make the same decision, we would hold those two public hearings at the same time.
I think it would be safe to ask if there's a motion to set this on to public hearing also on the same day.
I would still move.
Thank you, Commissioner Mergan. Is there a second?
I can second that.
Thank you, Commissioner Lenzmeyer. Seeing no discussion at this point in time, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. All right, we have two public hearings.
And Madam Chair, if I may, I know there's a, a lot of people watching and probably in the room today. Just so everybody is aware, you will be sent public notice again. So if you receive public notice the first time, you'll receive public notice for this time. If you did not, you will not receive notice. But please spread the word, or you can receive notice if you contact me. My email is angie.berg@co.sterns.mn.us. Thank you.
Thank you, and it is important that people know that feel free to be emailing us, to be contacting Ms. Berg. And if you want to participate on that day but can't do so in person, it, the option to be participating remotely, whether streaming or by phone is an option. We want to make sure people know that they've got multiple opportunities. Thank you. Okay. Issues by Commissioner, unless, Dr. Williams, is there anything else right now? Knowing we'll do our issues by Commissioner, we'll take a brief break, and then we'll be moving to our truth and budgeting hearing. Commissioner Lenzmeyer, you want to start?
I don't have any issues. Always nice to start the new year off with a contentious land use issue, so. It's a wonderful cure for insomnia.
Commissioner Mergan.
I have nothing.
Commissioner Natch?
And I don't have anything either.
I have nothing.
Okay, well, it's too bad everybody was just leaving, because I was gonna make sure they heard that we are still taking applications for our boards and commissions. So hopefully, people who are listening know that we, I think it's really important, people have been getting applications in, but there is still a bit more time on that. And otherwise, we will go into recess right now, and we will be back for our truth and budgeting meeting.
Okay, we will come back to order. We are holding, we're going to start our truth and budgeting meeting. We're holding this truth and budgeting meeting as required by the state to allow the public to understand and participate in the county budget process. The meeting tonight is only for informational purposes. No decisions will be made and no action will be taken tonight to set a 2022 county budget or a county levy. We'll have the county administrator and the budget team present an overview of our proposed budget and levy for 2022. Following the presentations, we will open up the floor to receive testimony from the public. Members of the public who are not in attendance, and this is important to note, you can still participate by sending comments to administration and the county board until December 14th, when the board is scheduled to set its final levy for 2022. While this will get posted, I'm not sure if you'll see it on the sign right now or the screen, to provide comments or feedback, email budget@co.stearns.mn.us. By phone, you can go ahead and give feedback, 320-656-3601, or by mail, or any of the above, to Stearns County Administration, County Administration Center, Room 121, 705 Courthouse Square, St. Cloud, Minnesota, 56303. And with that, I turn it over to Dr. Williams and Mr. Hammons.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. And yes, I will be accompanied by Steve Hammons, Assistant County Administrator, and Andy Schreifels, Auditor Treasurer, and Sarah Uch, our Finance Director. We'll kind of tag-team this. And I created that slide there, and actually, when Steve saw it, and he said, "Boy, that really highlights COVID-19," doesn't that mean exactly what I was trying to do? So I felt good about that. Because it does, it seems like everything that we've accomplished and everything that we've got planned, even, I mean, for what, last 20 months or something, everything that we've been doing seems to be somewhat overshadowed by COVID-19. But we have continued to meet our mission of providing excellent public services, and we continue to live out our values of being professional, approachable, responsive, collaborative, and fair and equitable. And we've continued to provide all of our services. We've continued to interact with our state and federal partners. We even, this year, completed our normal strategic planning process, and we'll continue all of this in our budget, or during our 2022, within the budget that you're seeing tonight. And maybe this is a good point to stop and say thank you to particularly our leadership team and all our employees for the extra efforts that they've all put in through this pandemic, including putting this budget together. It certainly is a team effort. And so, a little bit about what you'll find in this budget is kind of as always, that we want to create a budget that, of course, the board can eventually support and make it sustainable into the future. We have a new twist this year with CAREZAC dollars and ARP dollars. We have, we've talked about our debt levy, and we'll talk a little bit more about that with a looming large project with the jail justice study going on. We'll talk about that in a couple of minutes. As you know, in 2022, we'll be talking about what to do with the local option sales tax that's dedicated to transportation, because you have the opportunity to renew that. And you just saw our CIP and how that's going to impact what we're doing in the coming year. By way of technology, I think I've just highlighted there that we did issue, and the board approved issuing an RFP, or a request to negotiate, whatever we want to call it, to Internet service providers. So that process is underway, and those proposals are due the first week of January. So we'll be talking a lot about that in the first part of 2022. You'll see in this budget that we've made a large use of our project fund for some pretty significant technology system improvements. Again, we'll talk a little bit about that later. And along with our Justice Center study, we have the National Institute of Corrections currently doing a mapping process of our whole system. And when they're completed with that, hopefully, in the first quarter of 2022, that'll dovetail in with the completion of the other study, and we'll consider those when they're both issued. And it's not up here on the screen, but obviously, we're going to have to react to anything that results from the pandemic. As you know, there's consideration of an OSHA requirement for mandated testing, and that could make it, it's currently being litigated, but that could impact what we do in 2022, or some version of that could impact what we're doing in 2022, and could have some significant costs as well. So those are some of the highlights of what we're looking forward to. And then I just do a couple of reminders here, that, as you know, we're part of the state performance measurements program where we submit only about a dozen actual performance measures, and we get a little money back from the state for doing that. But we go way beyond that state program in measuring what we do, and we have many measures of workload, for one thing, and also measurements for results. And so, these are what we talked to you about during the budget process, and really, what that does is it creates a pretty good conversation and discussion about performance during the budget process. That's an important part of our budget process that sometimes gets, might get lost a little bit in the numbers. The second reminder is that much of what we do is mandated by the state or federal government, and 80% to 85% of what we do is mandated. And all these mandates are not necessarily completely funded. If we can see the graph here, and we show this every year, that intergovernmental revenues are covering in the neighborhood of 35%, and the property tax is covering about 50%. And there was a time, you can see in the inserted graph there, there was a time when the intergovernmental revenues were pretty much even.
Oh, yeah.
And so that graph went apart over the years, and it's stayed that way now for the last several years. But if you recall, we used this graph when we talked with our legislators, but it's important that we all remember that, and the public understands that we are told what to do with many, many of our services. So the actual numbers, talk a little bit about that. If you see the whole budget here, and there is a significant increase in total expenditures, but a significant increase in overall revenues as well. And so, when that all calculates out, we have a levy change of about $3.5 million, which is a 4.25% increase in the levy. And if you calculate that back to the tax rate, the tax rate will actually go down a little bit, and we'll talk considerably more about that later in this presentation. So the key components, drivers of those expenditures, one, of course, is personnel cost makes up a large portion of our budget. As you know, negotiations are underway, and so we're uncertain about what all those costs will be, but definitely is a major cost. Elections is interesting. This budget over the 2021 budget is 761,000 more, so we have $1.3 million in the budget for elections. So that's pushing almost 1% of the increase. Highway construction is up significantly, up about $6.5 million from 2021. So we have just over $25 million in highway construction, that's resurfacing reconstruction and some bridge replacements. So it's, I don't know if it's a record year, but it's certainly a large construction year for, planned for 2022. We'll talk more about the use of the project fund, and really, that's use of fund balance. This budget proposes to spend about $5 million in that project fund, and a number of, mostly on those technology improvements. And so that is a significant use of fund balance. And then the debt levy, we've talked a lot about that, that in anticipation of a large capital project, we've kept, we're suggesting to keep that debt levy higher than we actually need in 2022, because we have debt going off, leaving that levy, so that we can save a little bit of dollars, but also not have such a huge spike in the levy when we do incur that large amount of debt. And so, the use of the fund balance, again, because it's a little bit unusual, is highlighted here, I would say an unusually high use of fund balance, but that's what the project fund was really, really for. And arguably, most of what we're spending on is one-time expenditures, at least expenditures that we wouldn't have to do very often. So, in summary, you can see here, and I think this helps us understand the mandates, too, human services consumes a large amount of the budget, which is many mandates. A general fund consumes a large amount of the budget, and that includes mandated areas such as criminal justice system, the tax system, property records system.
Excuse me, so typically, we'd see this on a pie graph, I mean, but this, basically, these are proportional to the
Yes.
For the amount. So it's almost like a cake graph.
Yeah. It's a what graph?
A cake graph. It's a sheet
Yeah, there you go. Instead of a pie. Square pizza? I don't
Yeah, okay.
And I hate to get you off further, but one other question I had, as I know, sometimes you show us this with public safety, which would include not just the sheriff's department, but some of the human services and some other divisions. I don't know if you've done that, but it would be nice to have for the
Those functions account for about half of the general fund.
Right. And just, it's helpful for the public to know, I think that's one of the things that was probably illuminating to us, so, okay.
Yeah, public safety is part of the general fund.
As well as part of human services.
Part of the human services fund, yeah. On the revenue side, of course, similar, and of course, the profit tax levy makes up the difference there, the 87, almost 87.4 million dollars. That's kind of the high overview, and Steve's going to get into the little more of the detail of the budget.
Thank you. Mr. Hammond?
Good evening, Commissioner. So as Mike indicated, I'm going to go through some of the more detailed granular levels on some of the aspects of the budget for yourselves and the public. The first thing is to look at the overall expenditure breakdown among the four major categories that we have. As Mike indicated, personnel is one of our biggest parts of the budget, it's about 55, 56% of our total budget. As you see, we're going up about 4% next year there. Services are all of the contracts we have with vendors to provide services, and for road construction, for, you know, human services, all the different vendors that we use for providing direct service to clients, that's going up about 5 million or about 8%. And the supply budget is your, you know, typical office supplies, things we need to keep the, you know, agency working, everything from light bulbs to paper to everything else, and that's going up about 10%, but it's only about, you know, half a million dollars. A lot of that this year, the driver is in elections, because as an election year next year, the ballots, that's going to cost a lot right there. Capital outlay are all of the large, you know, individual pieces of equipment that cost more than $5,000 and have a lifespan of several years. So anything from snow plows to squad cars to technology. And so, we're seeing a big investment in technology, especially through the use of the project fund for our large technology projects, and that's why that's going up from 3.7 to 8.2 million. And again, the asterisk there is, again, that, you know, $5 million of that is coming out of fund balance, that, again, that we're trying to use that for these one-time expenses on technology projects. We have several that are very, very costly that we'll get to in just a minute. So overall, the budget's going from 164 million to 177 million, about an 8% increase. The capital improvement projects that are slated to start next year, and again, we talked about the overall plan next year, but the ones that are actually going forward with construction for 2022 are the Beaver Island Trail and the Phase One on the Wildwood Park Development. So those are the two that are slated for actual construction next year. Again, if you remember correctly, those are a lot of ones we have spent dollars to help for. So the Beaver Island Trail, if you recall, we only have $160,000 of county costs in that, the rest of it is from external sources. Does that answer your question, Commissioner Natch?
Just a refresher, where's the Wildwood?
Wildwood is the park in the middle of the county over by
St. Joe?
Kramer Lake.
Kramer Lake. In my head, it's still Kramer Lake.
I was thinking that's where it might be, but I wasn't sure.
All right. Our major technology spending, as I indicated, we have several projects that are going to cost over a million dollars. The sheriff's department needs a new system, they've been using their current software system for about 20, 25 years, and it's outdated and is going to be shut down by the vendor. And so, we're estimating the cost on that project to be about $2.5 million to get that system replaced. Again, it operates the jail, dispatch, all the patrol units for ourselves, the city of St. Cloud, and all of the other cop shops across the county. We're also looking at replacing our payroll system, that's been about 20 years that we've had our current one, and we have reached the end of life of our current system. And the vendor is telling us we either need to upgrade, which won't be cheap on the current platform, or get a new one, and so we're looking at that one costing over a million dollars as well. And then the slightly cheaper ones that we're going to, one-time costs we're going to spend out of our project fund are replacing the phone system, going to something, again, out of the lessons we've learned from the pandemic, to a more virtual phone system that'll be working through employees' laptops, for the most part. Updating the case management system that runs the county attorney's office, and upgrading the tax and CAMA system. Again, we're part of a multi-county consortium that has one platform that runs the tax system for most of the counties in the state, and so that portion that you see, that half a million dollars, is just Stearns County's portion of what that upgrade cost will be. Again, that price tag is distributed by that multi-county consortium. Again, so that was the technology, and most of those are, again, all coming out of the project fund. We have a couple other things coming out of the project fund that bring that total up to 4.9 million. So we're going to be doing some additional dispatch stations next year, that's going to cost us about $180,000. And we need to do some upgrades on our towers. There are some of our towers that need some repair, and we need to swap out some of the equipment that's hanging on the towers as well, because, again, end of life of technology. And so that's going to cost about $700,000 to do that upgrade. And so, again, as opposed to putting that on to the bond and having incurred more debt for it, we're going to use the project fund and use fund balance for these projects instead. Turning quickly over to road construction, again, as Mike mentioned, we have a large year of road construction projects for 2022, looking at about $25 billion of total expenses. This slide shows a list of where all the funding for these projects are coming from. Again, $2.2 million is coming from the tax levy. $1.7 million is coming from the wheelage tax when people come in to renew their license plates or get their tabs. And then we have the transportation sales tax, that's $4.8 million. They get, that, again, we're in year five next year of that, and again, the county board will have to determine if they wish to extend that into future years, but we're looking at, again, spending 4.8 out of the revenues generated there. Moving on, outside agencies, again, we have a number of outside agencies that we do fund because of state authorization or joint powers agreements, like the radio board, where we're part of a consortium of counties. The regional library system, again, a joint powers group where we are told what our allotment will be as part of their budgeting process. And as you can see, last year, we did 4.1 million, and we are, for the outside agencies, cutting that down by about $20,000 from what we did last year. Again, as we review this every year to keep things as flat as we can. And let's see, this is just a slide that I wanted to bring forward from when we talked to you back in October about where we've been. Again, for members of the public who may not have watched, some of the previous times we've been in front of the board, when the department submitted their requests, if we had submitted that budget to you as a board, the levy would have gone up 12.5%. And again, what we're recommending to have gone up 12 and a half percent. And again, what we're recommending to go forward with is a four and a quarter percent increase. We've been able to reduce the requests made by the departments by 6.8 million so far, and that's by declining positions that departments indicated they needed, by reducing our jail, border prisoners, and transports. You know, that's, that's a risk. We don't know how stable that number's gonna be, again, in the new world as we're dealing with COVID. We've reduced our commitment numbers in human services for, for placing people in commitments to a level below historical numbers. We have done a lot of good progress on commitments in these areas to really save money and do things in a more pragmatic and beneficial way. But, you know, it's, it's a risk to make some of these budget decisions. And again, we've shifted a highway project from being paid for by the levy to shifting it onto the sales tax. And again, we've removed a lot of items that were requested, that were one-time items, instead of having it be on the levy to pay for it out of the fund balance or project fund, such as the tower upgrades that I talked about. So we presented where we'd been, and we indicated that if the board was looking at any possible areas for reducing the budget from what is currently recommended, there's really only a couple of spots that are feasible at this point in the process, each of which have their own pros and cons and impacts in future years. And those would be to reduce or defer additional road projects, to reduce our technology spending, to reduce capital equipment spending from where we're at currently, and to reduce debt service. Looking at our debt service, again, we, we showed you this chart, looking at what our debt service levy is. Again, we try to keep the debt service levy as flat as possible. You don't want major spikes in either your levy or certainly in your debt service levy, because, you know, then you, the public feels that dramatically. So our goal has been to try to keep that level, level with that yellow line. And the blue line indicates the current payments that we make on a year-over-year basis, where some years, as you see, where our payments are lower than what we're levying, but there's other years where, again, we're, we're paying more than what we're levying, again, to try to balance it out and, and protect the public from seeing any dramatic changes from one year to the next. And with that, I will turn it over to Sarah.
Good evening. We do do a comparison between Stearns County and some of our other counties and where we sit at in the state each year as well, to make sure that we're measuring up to what we, what we're expecting. And so this, this slide here talks a little bit about where we're at with our total actual expenditures per capita. So this is a number you want to be high, because what it means is out of eighty-seven counties, we are eighty-third, eighty-third in our spending, so the lowest. We're on the low end of that. So when you take our total expenses divided by our per capita, you get to eighty-third out of eighty-seven counties. The next one below is talking about actual intergovernmental revenue. This is our state and our federal funding. And here is a number you'd wanna be low on, because we're talking revenues, right? So you wanna be number one, because you wanna be the highest per capita, you know, revenue coming in from the state and the feds, but we're seventy-eighth, meaning we're on the low end of what we're getting per capita from the state and federal government for funding. Our property tax rate, I know you will see this in a graphical format soon, but it's good to see that number going down. So this is the, the rate that's being applied to the values of the individuals within Stearns County for the counties rate. Then you have our net property tax levy rank per capita. Again, the best number to be here would be number eighty-seven, saying that you're the lowest property tax per capita. But we're doing pretty good at seventy-eighth out of eighty-seven counties in that comparison. We like to compare ourselves to a bunch of different county groups to see where we fall. So depending on what your appetite is, you can see where we compare to the MICA counties, those that we consider our comparison counties, and those that are neighboring around us. And you can see at four and a quarter percent, we're right in the ballpark of, of the averages for each of those three groupings. Another comparison we have here is, again, looking at where the averages are in the state based on populate, population and levy size. And of course, our levy size is eighty-seven million, so we would be down on that last percentage there. And you can see 3.55 percent. And we're at four and a quarter at this time. This is something we pulled new this year. We talked about this being more relevant with our neighboring jurisdictions that are experiencing a similar tax capacity increase or the similar growth that we are, and just showing where we've been at historically. So if you look from the bottom up, you'll see in 2015 what the levy percentage increase was from one year to the next. And so you can see, I know we talked about this in October as well, but you can see what happens when you have a low levy increase. Usually, within a few years, you need to have a higher percentage increase to somewhat make up for that. And so we fall in line. Our average since 2015 has been 3.13, which is lower than some of our neighboring jurisdictions of experiencing the same growth. And with that, I'll turn it over to Randy to talk about the property tax.
Thank you, Sarah.
Let me stand here.
Sure. So the first slide is talking about tax rates, and I think we've talked about that a bunch. And as you can see, in 2022, they're scheduled to go down. And tax rates are a product of tax capacity, which is generally market value and then the levy. So if the, your market value and tax capacity is going up more than your levy, then the tax rate will go down. So this next slide is talking about our, our new tax base that we've generated and new construction. That 208,000 is a pretty healthy level. That's a little bit more than last year, 208 million, excuse me. Utilities have decreased, and this is the first time I've seen this decrease since I've been here. But as you've probably known, this is an issue at AMC. There's been a number of court cases that have been lost by the state, and so we are making payments on that. And also, then the state has just reduced the value of those accordingly also. So that's certainly hit to our tax base. So that's going the wrong way. Increase in decertified TIF districts. So we had six TIF districts that have been decertified. So what happens with a TIF district is, when you start the TIF district, the value is frozen, and that stays for the general tax base. Then any increase in that tax base pays for the project costs. And then once that project's done, that whole tax base, then it's freed up for taxation by anybody. So we had six of those districts, a big one in St. Cloud and a big one in Sartell. That ended, and that then adds tax base for everybody to use. So adding those three together, you get over $220 million of new tax base. And the tax on that for the county is about two and a half million dollars. Excuse me. The increase in the task capacity is about two and a half million. The tax on that is about 1.2 million out of our 3.5 million increase. This one is a change in the tax base by property classification. And this is a little bit fluid. So like residential homestead is on the top, it's showing to go up 5.75 percent. We'll see that go up more, because right now, there's properties in residential non-homestead. That'll eventually move up as people apply for homestead. We'll see that. They get, you know, they get removed out of homestead if they have changes in their property, you know, and buying and selling. So some of that, we'll see some change there. The interesting one is the one on the bottom, the utilities that I talked about. The tax base on that went down twelve, over 12.6 percent. So those are state-assessed properties, and that's, of course, a, a big hit for us. The countywide taxes for all the jurisdictions, you can see that the city tax on the top is the highest. But of course, that's where all the growth is in the county for the most part. So you would expect that to be the highest. And then overall, the net tax for everybody in the county went up 3.88 percent. This next slide is showing the effect of the tax rate reduction that we've had. So this is a zero percent increase in your property value and what it would do to your county taxes. So this is not necessary to say this is what people are gonna see. This is to show the effect of a lower tax rate. And you just can see that, that you see some minor reductions because of that. So this next slide is, on average, what we believe people will see. And I'll get to residential homestead on the next slide. But the market value for egg homestead is up 3.76 percent. And then their increase in taxes for counties is up 3.3 percent about. So with the tax rate going down, we're able to buy down that increase in market value a little bit. The same thing's happened in commercial, industrial, and seasonal recreation, which the value increase went up, but the, the tax rate will be a little bit less because of the lower tax rate. So residential is a little bit more complicated, because there's other factors involved. As their market value goes up, they lose the homestead exclusion. So it's kind of a double whammy for them. And that's why, for them, you see a bigger increase when their market value goes up. Now, the market value exclusion started in 2012. And if you remember before that, we had homestead, the hack, homestead and egg credit. So that went away, and then we started this homestead exclusion, and it has not changed since, since it started in 2012. And that's something that I think does need to change. Talking to Jeff in the assessor's office, we're gonna see increases for payable 2023 in the mid-teens or higher. And if this number, if, if this homestead exclusion doesn't change, or something doesn't change in this area, residential homestead will see large increases. And so there will certainly be a big tax shift to residential properties in payable 2023 if nothing is done. So I think legislatively, that's something that we need to work with AMC on and MICA and to address. And I know Jeff, working with his staff and me working with my staff, we're gonna look at what we think would be a way of helping that out so people don't see that big hit. So with that, I'll turn it, I'll turn that over to Mike.
Thank you, Randy. Yeah, we'll, we'll wrap up here. And we've talked about most of these, but kind of carrying them into what it means for 2023. And the first and third bullets really kind of go together. We need to be sustainable in the future years, but we have to recognize that we're, we're recommending a use of over $5 million in fund balance. And obviously, we can't maintain that for many years to come. And we, we, we do have the study that was done in the sheriff's office a few years ago now, that we haven't implemented all of those changes, which, which is adding some positions. We talked about the local office sales tax. You'll need to make that decision sometime next year, what's gonna happen with that, because it sunsets. We've talked about the debt, debt service with the, with the large project in front of us. And of course, we're always subject to, to changes by the state and federal government. The, the process, we're, we're towards the end of the process. As, as we know, the board needs to adopt a budget before the end of the year. You've got a regular meeting on the 14th, which is likely gonna be your only meeting and your last meeting of the year. So that's when, when you would hopefully be able to adopt the budget. And the budget is, in summary, right there, and we've, we've talked about that. It's a, it's a four and a quarter percent increase in the levy, which causes the tax rate to go down a little bit. But as you can see, most property values are, are going up. So there is a, there is an impact there. And as, as Commissioner Clark said at the beginning, people can still make comments on the budget by the best, well, anyway, you can. But we, we, we do get emails at that budget, budget@co.sterns.mn.us. But of course, anybody can talk to their commissioners, send emails to commissioners, send emails to me, or snail mail, however they wanna make comments. And we would consider those before the final adoption.
Thank you. Thank you all. Is, do we have anybody who wanted to participate remotely tonight?
We do, we do not.
Did not think so. So at this time, I'm going to go ahead and call the public hearing part open to see if there is anyone here. Is there anyone here tonight who wishes to comment, to give testimony on the proposed budget? Is there anyone who is present who would like to give testimony on the proposed budget? For those of you at home, I'm only seeing staff. But I will ask one more time. Is there anyone here tonight who would like to give public testimony on the proposed budget? Seeing none, I will close this part. But as Dr. Williams said, and I said at the beginning, we still have time. We, we encourage people to reach out if you've got ideas, if you have questions. And we will be coming back together on December 14th. So Commissioner Lenzmeyer?
Yeah, the, the observation I'd make is that the TNT hearing process is, is really a legacy process. It originally, originally, well, the idea itself is at least 35 years old, because it was in place when I showed up. And what was going on 35 years ago? Well, your internet connection probably didn't work, because we didn't know what the internet was. The televised meetings weren't watched very much, because we didn't televise the meetings back then. The information outreach efforts didn't work, because we didn't have an information, a person whose dedicated job it was to do public outreach and connect with all of the media sources in the county, even the weekly papers, for example. And the folks have many more ways of getting this information. TNT idea is, is a concept that, whose time has come and gone. We, at this level, at the county level, are in no position to change that. And so we go through this every year. But the fact that we don't have attendees here in person doesn't mean that the interest isn't out there. It doesn't mean that folks aren't taking our outreach via media seriously. And it's just one of the things that we learn to live with. The good news is, we only have to do this once a year, and so I guess we'll survive. But there are some ideas that make sense at the time, and they don't make sense now. If you need another idea that's like that, I could summarize in a word, a concept called North Star. But we're not in a position to change it. You know, it's just something that continues on and on. The original merit was, had some value, but here we are. So in, in terms of ending it, I'm same, I'm in the same position as St. John the Baptist, the voice crying in the wilderness. So hey, it's nice to see you folks after dark. But I could live without it.
Well, Commissioner Lenzmeyer, I, I think you are unlikely to meet quite the same fate as St. John the Baptist, at least I hope. And Dr. Williams, you had something, and then we're gonna go ahead and adjourn.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, there was some changes proposed in legislative, by a, by a, one of our legislators is typically is pretty strong supporter of local government, but they were not good changes to this process. So better this than what was being proposed. And we did, we do, we do do some extra things to get the budget. Of course, we use our website. But we did the two-page flyer again, that went out with the, with the notice of the hearing. And, and that actually generates some, some emails, mostly some questions. So anyway, there are better, there are better ways than this to engage with the public, no doubt. But what was posed last year was not a better way.
And our department heads are, continue to explore more ways to get their individual messages out. Back in the day, you couldn't even get the elected department head to do that. And now, most of the big departments are on board with that concept. So change comes slow, but, and not all change is good. But here we are.
Well, and certainly
We did have our assessor's office here. So there's people, because typically, if they show up, many people that show up at the meeting are
We have.
Are inquiring about their valuation rather than the budget. And I don't know how many people came tonight, but we, we were there and ready for that.
Sounds like there were none that came tonight. I do think this, this is useful, I think, for all of us. And there are And there are people, I don't know about you, Lee, but I do hear from people somehow having watched this. So that's a good thing. And referring back to what you were bringing up, Mike, the proposal, we would have been doing this with city councils and school boards, all on the same night. That would not be actually a very useful endeavor for any of the public. And so at least, I don't think I'm contradicting you at all in saying that I appreciate all the efforts our staff and certainly each of us try to do to get the word out. And yet, this maybe is something that might look a little different in the next 10 years, hopefully. And with that, we do want to encourage people to be reaching out with their ideas, their questions, concerns. If you have an issue with regard to your estimate, make sure you're getting ahold of our land services. With that, we are adjourned.